...sixth meeting of Dublin City Council to order. Judy, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Here.
Ms. Rosa.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Reiner.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Keenan.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
We, under the special recognition portion of our agenda, we're going to get to Peg Mills, who is the Director of Ufit. However, I am going to ask her, Peg, are there a couple of your students, members, participants who could help us with the Pledge of Allegiance? Could they please come forward?
Yay.
You guys will hear more about this great organization here in just a minute, but we're going to get some special assistance here. How are you? Good, I'm Greg. What's your name? Matt, nice to meet you, Matt.
I don't see him.
What, just, well, here's the flag, so that looks good right there. You guys can turn this way. We might have some more, we got more, hang on, we're going to get everybody up here.
Good, well, let's get them all up here.
Here's the flag.
Kids ready?
Ready?
Yeah.
Let's go.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your help. Peg, you might want to just stay right up here at the microphone. So, as you can see on the, on our monitors, Ufit, the Unique Fitness and Independence Training, I had the opportunity to meet Peg a week or so ago, and Christine, I know that you know Peg, you want to kick it off?
Sure, I think, actually, this is the first time I'm meeting Peg face to face. A mutual friend of ours put us in touch, he knows, his name's Nada Nair, and he knows how passionate I am about our community, and thought that in meeting Peg, and I thought it would be a great idea for Peg to come and introduce herself to council and let folks know what her program's all about, and I think there are a couple of intersection points with some of the things that I have an interest in regarding volunteerism with the schools, and potentially also aging in place when you think about the segment of our population that is not just aging, but also has some special needs as well. So I thought it'd be a great idea for Peg to come in and introduce herself to council and kind of get the word out about her organization, and I just think what you're doing is really impressive, so thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Could you grab that microphone, Peg, pull it down towards you?
How's that?
And give us some address that you're willing to share to put on the record.
Okay. Well, my name's Peggy Mills, I had the privilege of working in the Dublin Schools as an adapted PE teacher for the last 25 years, and started in 1990, retired in May to start Ufit, which is Unique Fitness and Independence Training. What I saw in the schools was impressive, and I don't need to tell this group that Dublin is the innovative leader in many, many ways, and what we did in the Dublin Schools, I would like to see that to continue into the population of people with disabilities as they age and as they become community members, they start working in the community, they start, they're going to be an active part of it, and we want them to have as much independence and stamina and health as possible. And so, when I started Ufit, Ufit is Unique Fitness and Independence Training, the whole point of Ufit is to take our individuals with disabilities and give them the same opportunities for fitness. And we, in the Dublin Schools, have the ability to adapt, customize the learning for the individuals, we had the ability to empower them, and then we also had systems in place. In best practices in education, Dublin was the cream of the crop in being able to put these systems in place, like visual schedules and things like that, that those individuals really need to thrive in their community. So, this isn't about me, this is about them. As these individuals age, we specifically started Ufit to have a facility that would be able to cater, not just accommodate, but cater to their fitness needs. And so we started working with a few individuals, doing personal training, and has led us to the point of we're going to open our doors on our own facility on Commerce Parkway in March. And what we're going to do is utilize a lot of what we've already seen happening through the school district with volunteers, we have peers, we have people like Drew Mills, we have CJ Saunders, we have Colin McMillan, we have Elliot Chinook, we have Andrew Moss, and I could just name some of our current and past Dublin students who are continuing to volunteer their time to be role models with this population. And so, basically, we customize, I guess I should be doing this, shouldn't I? I'm not used to doing this. You know, our mission is to dedicate this center to helping individuals be fit for life. We don't want it to just be, you know, something where they can go and have a rec experience, we want this to affect them throughout their life at home, their life in the job, and in what Christine's talking about, as parents age, you know, you're looking at parents who are going to be aged, and they're going to be taking care of kids who are aged. And, you know, if we look at some of the statistics, I'm just flying through this, I'm sorry. There we go. Some of the statistics, they're not, they're a little bit alarming, you know, as we look at the population that ages, obesity rates are higher in people with disabilities, the environment and some of the activity levels are a lot less when they transition from the wonderful programs they've had in school, and then they go through the post-secondary, and then they come out into adulthood, and there just isn't the same things available, and that's what we want to give them. Individuals are living longer with and without disabilities, I think they might as well be healthy, and so that is my goal, to make this a center that not only Dublin, but some of the other communities can access as well. We know that there's a lot of chronic diseases, and this is particularly a greater risk with our people with disabilities. We also know that, as you know, if you've worked out at all, the more that you're active you are, and the more that you do, the better you feel, and the better you feel about yourself. I'm going to give you an example here to see somebody, Paige, would you stand up for just a minute? Paige is one of our students who is in the post-secondary program with the Dublin Schools, and I talked to her teacher, actually. You can sit down now, Paige, thanks, I just wanted everybody to meet you. Her teacher actually, when I, as soon as I told her about this program, they immediately jumped on and signed a purchase order, and now the entire program, post-secondary program, comes to the Ufit gym once a month. As soon as people heard about Dublin doing it, it grew. So with very little talk from me, Ollontangie Schools started doing the same thing, we now have contracts with all our friends, which is the post daycare, adult daycare programs, we have three different locations of theirs that come to Ufit, Bridgeway Academy, post-secondary students come to us, Oakstone Academy, West Central High School with the Franklin County Board of DD, At Adventures, and then we have individual clients from all over the city, and they're just asking us, when are we going to expand east and west and north and south? They all want to know when we're going to have Ufit outside of the Dublin area. And so I think we can see that there's a growing need, the parents, I have to give my kudos to the parents, they want these kids to be adults, they want them to be productive members of society, they want them to be healthy, they want them to have the same fitness opportunities as other individuals, and that's what we want to do here at Ufit. I'm going to go back to Paige real quick, because this is a picture of Paige, not only does she do personal training with me, she also comes with her class, led by one of the intervention specialists over here on Bridge Street, but she works out of the Marriott, and so she's doing some folding of towels here, and the first thing that I got, I started to see that, when I knew that we were on the right track, is I got a text message from her teacher saying Paige wanted me to send you this picture, she wanted you to see how she's using her correct form of doing lunges to put the towels on this rack. So she can do this in a healthy way, she's not going to hurt her back, she probably could teach all of us a few things about how to bend over, and so we're seeing a direct generalization going on between a fitness opportunity and work and lifelong health. So that's, that's what Ufit is. We know the statistics, we know the need, we know that families want this and they're behind it, we're even seeing, you know, an interest in families wanting to promote businesses and actually have employees be people with special needs, led by Dana, where's Dana? I'm going to back here somewhere. So we're going to make this community strong, we want to make it strong with these individuals being an active part of it, we're not competing with anybody, we're going to add value to our community, and we're hoping that we can get on board with some of you to be able to make this happen and make it really effective in serving this population. Again, I want to just reiterate that the volunteers that are a part of this in our community, we have retired teachers that are asking us if they can come and volunteer at Ufit, I want to see us work together, and again, I want to thank the families for making this possible and for having such a high view of the health and fitness of their children. So, thank you for this opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in, Peggy, and for your, what, 25 years with the Dublin Schools, is what you said? So thank you for your service in that regard. I'm assuming that this www.ufitdublin.com is the place people can go and get all the information they need about how to contact you and what they can do to volunteer. Thank you so much, Peg, for coming in. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, are there, any members of council that would like to remove either of the two items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve those two items, is there a second?
I'll second.
Judy?
Ms. Keenan. Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Second reading public ordinance, public hearing ordinances, ordinance 04-18, Judy?
Amending the city income tax code to adopt section 718.80 through 718.95 of the Highway Vice Code and declaring an emergency.
Nobody's going to want to talk about this one, are they?
Yeah, Thad's here this evening.
Good evening, everybody. This ordinance is put before the council today based on actions taken by the state in its last biennial budget bill. They passed sections of that bill as a rider on the appropriations bill to authorize the centralized collection of net profit taxes on an opt-in basis. The city of Dublin has joined 150, excuse me, 160 other municipalities represented by Frost, Brown, Todd, and the Franklin County Court system to challenge that action on a home rule basis. We moved for a preliminary injunction and had a hearing on that issue February 12th and 13th. We also briefed that issue and received a decision last Wednesday that was adverse to our claims and a final judgment from the trial court. So as we pursue appeal in the 10th District Court of Appeals and seek other relief while that appeal is pending, this ordinance is before you as a result of the requirement found in that state law saying that municipalities have to adopt legislation to give the state authority to collect the net profit taxes on the municipality's behalf. This is being requested as an emergency action due to that requirement of the state law, due to the posture of the case, and due to the wording of the law that suggests that failing to comply would divest the city of taxing authority for income taxes, and so we want to avoid the chance of any frivolous actions to be taken based on that. So that's why it's here in front of you tonight and why it's being requested as an emergency. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also saw Fay Gibson here as well, who was instrumental in helping to prepare our case and will continue to be instrumental moving forward.
Any questions from council? I make a motion that we treat this legislation as an emergency.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Keenan.
And on the ordinance?
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
So stay tuned, I guess.
Yep.
I make a motion that the next 16 ordinances related to the city sanitary sewer extension program that will authorize acquisition of easements on certain properties on Bel Air Court, Bel Air Avenue, Limerick Lane, and Dublin Road, I make a motion that we waive councilor's order to discuss these ordinances, 05-18 through 20-18 together, is there a second?
I'll second.
Judy?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
And if you could, Judy, just read the names of the property owners into the record, please.
William and Joan Bonus, Scott and Renee Hayson, Mark and Jennifer Crabtree, Jason Overby, Wolfgang and Karen Dorchlag, Hassan and Bridget Ayoub, Patrick McMonigal, Dorothy Mians, Amy Lawrence, Jacob and Denise Wallenmeyer, Rochelle Van Nari Rogers, Mitzi Walters, Shirley Walters, and Todd and Elizabeth Brewster.
Thank you, Judy. Paul?
I have nothing new to present on these items tonight, council. This is providing for, or 16 easements from 14 property owners for utility extensions in areas 11A and 11B.
Any questions from council?
With that staff recommendation's approval.
Questions from council?
When do you anticipate construction starting?
We're getting bids prepared, or the bid package prepared right now, we hope to be to city council April 9th at the earliest with a bid acceptance.
And what will the duration of that project be approximately?
Throughout the entire summer, we're hoping certainly to be wrapped up before fall, but it may extend in the fall, we're taking a look at completion date right now. Again, it's both a sanitary sewer project and then also a partnering with a storm sewer improvement as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, voting on the whole block, 05-18 through 20-18.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Introduction, first reading on ordinances, ordinance 21-18, Judy?
Sorry.
Sorry. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 1.015 acre, more or less, temporary easement from OCLC located at 6565 Kilgar Place for the public purpose of constructing the city sanitary sewer infrastructure project.
Megan?
Good evening, members of council, staff is preparing to construct the North Fork Sanitary Sewer Capacity Improvement Project, which involves the construction of a parallel relief sanitary sewer pipe. This sewer runs through the eastern property of the OCLC Incorporated and requires that the city obtain a temporary construction easement to construct the project. After extensive, good faith discussions between the city and OCLC, we've come to mutually agreeable terms for the sum of $60,000 for this temporary construction easement. Staff recommends council approval of ordinance 21-18, authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary conveyance documents. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And there will be a second hearing on March the 12th?
Yes, there will.
Questions from council at this point? Okay, we'll see you back on March the 12th. Ordinance 22-18, Judy?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Accelerate Media to induce it to lease a facility to retain an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle?
Good evening, members of city council, before you tonight is the incentive proposal between the city and Accelerate Media for the retention of their office here in Dublin. Founded in 2002, Accelerate Media provides customized training solutions to global 1,000 companies. They work with 20 of the Fortune 50 organizations, providing the most dynamic training solutions available anywhere. They've enjoyed their location here in historic Dublin due to its walkability, their connection to the area in historic Dublin remains an attractive quality to their workforce. This project would result in the retention of 50 employees here in Dublin, with the potential to grow as they expand their client base and offerings. The company would be required to sign at minimum a five-year lease with the city of Dublin for the agreement to take effect. Accelerate Media, the agreement with Accelerate Media is a three-year, 8% performance incentive on withholdings collected for all employees 2019 to 2021, that is capped at $18,600 for the term of the agreement. In consideration, Accelerate Media agrees to retain their 50 employees here in Dublin through 2000, or 20,023. The city expects to net approximately $353,040 over the five-year term, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council?
I have just one question, the incentives based on their entire payroll, not just the payroll of potential expansion, is that, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's my only question, thank you.
All right, we'll see you back on the March 12th, Kyle.
All right, thank you.
Ordinance 23-18, Judy?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Viva Systems to induce it to lease a facility to relocate and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Rachel?
Good evening, members of city council, economic development staff has been in discussions with Viva Systems Incorporated, it's a Silicon Valley-based company, it's a leader in cloud-based software for the global life sciences industry. The company is currently located in Hilliard, they've exhausted their search for expansion space in Hilliard, so they have chosen to relocate to Dublin. The company is planning to relocate 39 employees from their Hilliard office, make their new Dublin location, significant expansion to a second US hub, a product support office here in Dublin, and adding 90 new employees by the end of 2023, very exciting. The company is pursuant to the economic development agreement, required to sign a minimum eight-year lease with the city for the agreement to take effect. So the economic development agreement proposed to Viva Systems is a six-year, 15% performance incentive on withholdings collected for all employees through 2024, capped at $135,000 over the term of the agreement, and the city also proposes a $10,000 location grant to assist with relocation costs and fit up. And in all, the city expects to net approximately $1,070,646 over the eight-year term of the lease. So with that, a company representative will be here with us at the second reading on March 12th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions in the meantime.
Questions from council, Kathy?
So the grant, other than the signing of an eight-year lease, are there any other requirements or payback provisions on that grant?
They're just required to obtain the occupancy permit, so just demonstrate that they've signed the lease and have occupied the space, so otherwise they just put that into the improvements to the, to the new facility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Have a question, and it's in general about most of our agreements, incentive agreements like this. If a company is asked to have employees, a certain number of employees, for a certain period of time, and they leave before that period of time is over, are all of the payments that we have given to them forfeited, or just payments following the year they leave? In other words, if a company was supposed to stay five years, you give them two years of payments, they leave at year three where they were supposed to stay till year five, what's the repercussions in most of these incentive agreements?
The incentive is performance-based, so they have predetermined targets that they're required to hit from their payroll withholdings, the 2% income tax. If they hit it, then they obtain, then the city grants them the performance incentive. If they don't hit it in any, any given year, then they simply do not receive the performance incentive, there's no further repercussions beyond that.
Right, and if they leave the city?
And if they leave the city, then they just, the city wouldn't be out anything, if you will, they don't owe anything back to the city, they just don't get the performance incentive.
Thank you.
Sure.
But the 10, the relocation grant is not, that's not prorated, that's a one-time expense at the time of relocation.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on March the 12th, thanks, Rachel. Ordinance 24-18, Judy?
Amending sections 2 and 14 of ordinance 1517, the compensation plan for non-union personnel pertaining to the Division of Recreation Services.
Thanks, Mike. Homer?
Good evening, council, this ordinance amends ordinance 15-17, the non-union compensation plan by reclassifying the member services supervisor pay grade 5.1 to a member services coordinator at a lower pay grade of 5.2. This reclassification is needed to facilitate a minor reorganization of the Division of Recreation Services, and it will consolidate member services underneath the operations supervisor, which will enhance customer service and better synchronize operations within the division. Staff recommends that the, that this be approved at the next meeting of city council on March the 12th.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll see you back on March 12th, thanks, Homer. Ordinance 25-18, Judy?
Adopting and enacting a supplement, S43, to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Dublin, Ohio. I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Christina. Dana?
This, this just simply codifies actions already taken by council as a housecleaning measure.
Housekeeping matter.
Housekeeping, not cleaning.
Housecapping.
Keeping.
Housekeeping matter. Any questions from council?
Could be cleaning.
This just gets us consistent, right? Updates.
That's correct.
Our updates. Hearing no questions, we will hear, we'll see you back on March the 12th on that one. Introduction, public hearing, vote on resolutions, resolution 11-18, Judy?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a reimbursement and maintenance agreement with Union County for the Highland-Croy Road post-road traffic signal improvement project.
Paul? Someone's got to introduce it. You know what? Thanks, John. Mike's getting tired. He's tired. Paul? Go ahead.
Members of council, the capital improvements program includes the Highland-Croy Road post-road intersection improvement project, which provides for the installation of a traffic signal and now also a southbound right turn lane. Dublin staff was asked to prepare the detailed construction drawings for this improvement last fall as development north of the intersection has occurred. The project will be funded by service payments from the Perimeter West Tax Increment Finance District and debt issuance for Dublin's portion of this project, and we'll talk in a moment about the other half of the project. Dublin is the lead agency for the design and construction of the project, and Union County has agreed to participate in the funding. The bid for the project, which was received on February 6th, was $201,671.56. Union County has agreed to contribute 50% of the total cost, or $10835.78, towards the project. The project will consist of a single mast-armed design with the base in the northeast quadrant of the intersection, as this design proved to be the most cost-effective solution and functional design that minimizes utility conflicts and construction, and constructibility issues. In addition to the traffic signal, a short 70-foot southbound right turn lane that fits inside the existing right-of-way will also be constructed to ease turning movements at the intersection. No right-of-way acquisition is needed for this project. Furthermore, Dublin agrees to maintain the traffic signal and all the appearances associated with the signal while in service. In addition, Dublin agrees to maintain all pavement and roadway elements currently located in Dublin. Union County agrees to maintain the new southbound right turn lane and all associated roadway elements and pavements located in their jurisdictions, and I have an exhibit that will show that jurisdiction if you're interested to see that. Staff does recommend approval of this resolution this evening, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council?
I would like to see the jurisdiction lines.
So, you'll see the intersection, I'm trying to use the mouse to give you some bearing here. This is our corp line presently. This area north of the intersection and north of Post Road is outside our corporate limits. South of the intersection, and actually the east leg is within our corporate limits, so this portion of Post Road is within the city of Dublin, the remaining portion is outside the city.
So as part of the cost sharing of this project, is what's listed in here, does that include the design portion or just the building?
Just the construction portion.
Just the construction portion.
Correct.
So we effectively have paid for the design portion of it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, I know it's our normal course, but they're going to maintain the right-hand turn movement there.
turn movement there. We will have a plow down in that part of the world when we have snows. I mean, they're about, how far away, twenty, thirty miles away?
Yes, and I think typically we work out those sort of arrangements with our jurisdictional partners to, you know, to pick up areas that are difficult for them, and they pick up others that might be difficult for us.
This is make sure we, we have an understanding there on that. We don't want to foot a snow on one side and clean on the other, which I know you won't do, but I did want to, did want to raise it.
Understood.
I'm glad we finally got to this point. We lost a member of our church at that intersection some years ago, T-boned right there, Post Road and Highland-Croy. So it's long overdue.
Any other questions?
In addition to the design elements, our, the city will be also covering the expenses of the management, the oversight of the construction, as I.
Yeah, we're, we're managing, we've actually managed, project managed the design in-house, and we will do the same with the construction administration, and also the inspection will use in-house staff for that.
That's all I have.
Anything else from council?
Mayor, if I, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just want to jump in on one comment. In that this intersection improvement may be overdue, I just want to emphasize that, that the, and I appreciate Councilmember Aludo bringing this forward, that the intersection is technically out of the Dublin jurisdiction, and the city is stepping in and in advance to, to make that a safer condition.
Really, as, as we've done at Cos Gray and, and whatever, the corner, where the roundabout's going in right now, isn't that multiple jurisdictions up there as well?
That's, that's another example of the city leaning forward into an intersection that's not, I don't think Cos Gray's entirely our intersection.
No, it is not just the south leg, so. One point of clarification with this project is it would, debt will not be issued for the project, it'll be cash-funded. So that is a clarification.
Thanks, Paul.
I think it's, I think it's really important to note, and our residents who've asked for safety in this area, that the city has stepped up and paid for improvements in an area that's not even their jurisdiction, and that that's an important factor to, goes a long way, I think, in speaking that we care about the safety and well-being of the people that live in this area, regardless, irregardless of whether they live in our city or not. So I think that's kudos to the city here for stepping up and taking care of that.
And I, I think it also shows good partnership with our neighbors and other government agencies, so I applaud that. Could you share, I know this is an interim solution towards a longer-term plan to improve the traffic flow and continued safety. Could you give us an update on that at this time?
On the long-term improvement?
Just a little bit, please?
The interchange itself?
Yes.
Oh, on the interchange, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought you said intersection. So the status of the interchange is that the city has led the design process and paid for the design process, environmentals. We are budgeted in our capital budget to update the environmentals on the interchange, and the city has previously purchased the necessary right-of-way with the exception of a very small piece left, to the tune of about sixteen million dollars to date. At this time, the remainder of that interchange is not in the city's five-year capital budget. However, we have been working with Union County, Union County, and in our partnership with them, Union County has advanced a million dollars along with a application for additional funding, which we did receive about six point nine million dollars, seven million dollars additional. However, we still have a, I don't try to get all my numbers right, so I'm looking here, we still have a, a gap of about eighteen million dollars that we need to fund yet. So we're looking for outside resources to, to fill that gap.
Seems to me some of the, the land that's open in terms of the potential development, those developers should be helping.
Yep. I would agree with that.
Okay, any other questions from council? Judy?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution twelve dash eighteen, Judy?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Highland-Croy One Sixty-One Intersection Improvement Project.
We didn't go very far, Paul, you just moved a screen over about two hundred yards.
Zoomed out a little bit, too, we gained some elevation there, so. Yes, members of council, this is the companion resolution this evening, which provides for the acceptance of the bid for this traffic signal improvement at Highland-Croy Road and Post Road. On February sixth, we did receive three bids for the project. The engineer's estimate for the project was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The capital improvements program and the budget provided for three hundred thousand dollars for the project. Complete General Construction submitted the lowest and best bid of two hundred and one thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Staff has previously worked with Complete General Construction Company on many projects, and successfully so, has complete confidence in Complete General. The anticipated start date for the project is April first of this year, and we are targeting, and the contract documents provide for a July twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen completion date. There is a cautionary note that we are worried about the hardware delivery, particularly the mast arm for the project, but we are going to work with the contractor on that. And in the contract documents, we required that the contractor submit shop drawings within two weeks after signing the contract for those materials, so that we can get those delivered as quickly as possible. But at this point, we are sticking with the July twenty-seventh completion date. With that, staff recommends approval of this resolution, and with that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
What kind of traffic disruption will there be?
We don't plan on any. We're going to maintain traffic through the intersection. Might be some short interruptions, but traffic will be maintained. The southbound right turn lane will be built under traffic. Again, the mast arm, it's really just a single mast arm, and vertical will be in the northeast corner of the intersection, it'll be out of the way. So we are in the plans, we've said, you know, you must maintain traffic through the intersection.
Great, thank you.
I saw Chief here earlier, and he may have stepped out, but I'd like us to monitor this for when we have special activities going on in this area to possibly provide some additional help with managing the traffic in that area. Like Mike said, we, you know, last thing we want is for anyone to have an injury out there, and, you know, we have some high-volume uses coming up for that neck of the woods, and I think it would be appropriate to keep an eye on it and make sure that we have someone there to help. You know, it seems like when the traffic gets really backed up, people get more and more impatient, and will take greater and greater risks, and that's when the worst happens, so.
Understood, we agree.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, so if this mast arm is going to take extra time to get developed, will the construction of the turn lane and all of that be done regardless of the day?
Yeah, we anticipate when weather gets good, they'll start construction on it and have it ready, along with the foundation for the mast arm, so it's really just a matter of, and everything else, underground conduit wiring. So really, when the mast arm, if it is delayed, shows up, it can be set very quickly and the rest of it wired up in the signal made operational.
Good, great. So I, I don't know, what is a video vehicle detection system?
It's actually, instead of using loop detectors that are embedded in the pavement, there are actually video cameras that will use video technology to basically spot you. So within the view of the video itself, that's how we do the, the detection, and in that, we provide for adjustments in the signal timing based on the volume at the intersection.
So is that what we have across the city?
We have it in different locations. If you go to Hard Road and Emerald Parkway, we've got some video detection there that we've used. At Harden Sawmill, with that intersection improvement with the city of Columbus, I believe it also has video detection. So it really depends on the intersection itself, where still, some traffic engineers are still partial to their loops in pavement, but the video detection's come a long way.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Judy?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Paul. Staff comments, Dana?
Thank you, good evening. Just a reminder to council and the public about the state of the community, which will be held on March eighth. Typically, we refer to this as state of the city. As you know, the city manager provides a written annual report to City Council about our accomplishments for the previous year, and then it has become a tradition to do a presentation in the form of the state of the ci, state of the city, so that will be on March eighth. However, this year, I've invited Dr. Todd Hoadley, the Superintendent of Dublin Schools, to join me in that presentation, so therefore it is now a state of the community as opposed to state of the city. So invite everyone to come out on Thursday, March eighth at six P.M. There'll be a reception beforehand, presentation at seven, and then the networking following the presentation at eight o'clock, and that will be held at the Exchange in Bridge Park. We hope everyone can come out for that. We'll also be live streaming it if you can't make it, so please join us one way or the other, we hope. In your packet for info-only items, there were three follow-up memos, so if you have questions on those, we can certainly try to answer those as best we can. And then there was a, also a update memo from the Dublin branch, Columbus Metropolitan Library Dublin branch regarding the building project, and there is a reference in there to the significant transitional element and the funding of that. Staff will report on that with some recommendations, thoughts and recommendations at your next council meeting. And other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Dana? Thank you, Dana, appreciate that update. Committee reports, P and Z, Jane?
Yes, we had Planning and Zoning had a workshop with ARB at their last Planning and Zoning meeting, and I, I, we were disappointed because the presentation that Vince gave, which was, which was very good, gave very little time for conversation. We were all looking forward to a workshop, that we could actually discuss it, but there was no workshop time. So I'm recommending that we get an opportunity to get back together again, because it is quite a important piece, this changes in the Bridge Street zoning code. But what did come out of the Planning and Zoning and ARB workshop was the recommendation by at least three members of the workshop team on the commission that suggested removing the historic district from the Bridge Street code altogether. So I think this is, this is quite a conversation we need to have, because they found, they felt that, and I don't want to, I'm paraphrasing, so it's, we should look back at the workshop minutes, but, but the concern is that the code and preservation of the district are like oil and water in a way, in that you can put them together and you can shake them up, but, but they're still going to try to separate themselves because they have different objectives and different goals. So, so I would suggest that we do not hurry this process through without a lot of conversation, and we didn't have that.
Did you define historic district, then, the entire historic district, or are you talking about the south?
I think that depends. We have this historic and cultural assessment that we paid for that defines what is considered historic inventory, and I think that it takes probably a few workshops and some focus groups and citizens and stakeholders that have an interest in this to take a look at that assessment, and then maybe make that decision based on that.
Now, that may be a sticky wicket as you move westward towards the Kroger, and some of that area that we've defined as historic district, and
That's true.
That's not going to lend itself to some of the historic district, I guess rationale, you know what I'm saying?
Right. You know, I, I think you're absolutely right, Mike, in that, that some of the ways that maybe these workshops could be helpful is that if we, if we gather people together, we might be able to take that third piece, which is the piece that's outside of the historic district yet contiguous to it, we might be able to find innovative and shared ways that we can look at that as being developed in a way that's acceptable to the community.
Very good, thank you.
So are you suggesting another P and Z workshop?
I think that's, that's one, but I also think it needs to be a broader participatory group of people that is, that's talking about this, because I think that this is such a complex piece. I think it takes reassessment of sort of how the Bridge Street district is growing, the impact it's having on the historic district, you know, how we mitigate that, how we enhance that, how we correct whatever is working, building on what is working that's been very successful, and then trying to come up with a variety of solutions and, and systems and, and maybe new zoning laws or changing laws or whatever it takes. I just think it's going to require a conversation, a lot of conversation.
So are you looking to, you looking to work with any specific people or any specific meetings moving forward, or, I just want to make sure you have some action steps?
Okay.
Or support from, you know, that we would weigh in if you were looking for something with any specificity?
You know, I, I think it would be really wise to get together stakeholders from the historic district, from the community, from the business area, from the small businesses, from the larger businesses that are, that are investing in it as well, the larger developers, the smaller developers, the residents, and, and staff, and, and put together some conversation tables, you know, and to brainstorm this a little bit, and get some, get a facilitator out, facilitator out there to help put the ideas on the table, take a look at what the priorities are, and see if we can come up with some plans.
So maybe you can partner with Donna on that. She has really the inroads to all of those groups with the work that she's been doing down there to, you know, get something on the calendar so that you have support, and then let us know what support you need from your colleagues as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I guess I would assume that the two bodies, the ARB and the, and PZC have determined that they, they want to go ahead and do these joint workshops, and so that you do have more time. Has, has the two bodies taken, I mean, staff is here to support, so if the two bodies desire to continue to do the joint workshops, then by all means we'll be there, and I guess that's what I'm, I would ask for clarification on, are the two bodies looking to do that?
I don't know that they actually said that they wanted to do that. They did say that they were disappointed that there wasn't any time. I mean, literally, the presentation took the entire time, so there was no conversation, really. So I, I see that as an adequate way to come and bring, as, as a council member watching that, I didn't see that as an adequate way to bring any information forward to the council. So in knowing that, and also realizing how broad this conversation is, that forty-five minutes to an hour in a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting just isn't going to give you the answers that you're all looking for.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Before we get too far out ahead of ourselves, what if you did meeting part two, had that discussion, and then you guys, like Dana's looking for, these two groups say, this is what we want, and see if they're willing to participate? So could we put a meeting staged?
Yeah, that's the clarity I was looking for, because I certainly, and I hadn't had an opportunity to clarify this with staff, I mean, or talk to them about that. So, yeah, I, I think, you know, great suggestion, and, and having workshop session two to finish that dialogue is good, and then, you know, determine as the two bodies, if that's the way you want to proceed, which I'm assuming that's the case, just to give staff that direction, we'll certainly be there to, to support any and all that.
I think it's a great idea to bring another workshop together. I also think it's important that we, that we don't limit it just to this. I think the conversation is broader. I think we do have to look at how the Bridge Street zoning, we can make changes to the code, but if we don't make changes that effectively give you an objective of making sure that we either preserve the historic district, changing a few things in the code is, is not going to give us the answers that I think that we're really looking for on a broad, on a broad objective. So I think that we need to open up the conversation to a few more people as well as, as the workshop of the ARB and P and Z.
Do you think, sort of not getting out ahead of ourselves, what if we just did the first part first and then addressed the second part? Because then maybe you could get ideas from them as to who that next step would include. I'm just afraid if we have a session number two and we invite everybody that we can invite, it's going to, one, we're going to bite off more than we, you, we're going to bite off more than you can chew, one, and two, there are going to be new people introduced to the conversation who are going to say, well, I wasn't here for the first part, so we need to go back to the first part again.
Right.
So I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't finish that conversation and then go to the next conversation after that.
I, I don't think that I was expecting to have all the stakeholders at this A and B, ARB, P and Z workshop. I think it's good to get that group of people together and, and take a look at this. I then think that before it comes before council, we should get a broader conversation, understanding of a broader conversation as well from other stakeholders, and, and if Planning and Zoning ARB wants to become part of that larger conversation and bring their thoughts and opinions to that with a facilitator, I think that would be helpful. I just think that as a council, there's a lot of information here that we, that, that we need to hear, and I just don't think it's, I don't think just changing some aspects of the Bridge Street zoning code is going to give you the result that I think the community might be looking for in a commitment to the historic district.
So could we set up workshop, workshop two?
Yes.
As the first step, and figure out where to go from there?
Yeah. Okay. Anything else from P and Z, Jane?
Anything else from P&amp;Z, Jane? Admin, Chris?
I am looking forward to our retreat this coming Thursday and Friday, and am terrifically excited to hear all of your presentations, so I know that you've been diligently working on them, and we'll look forward to that time together.
I'm terrifically excited to present them.
Oh, I'm feeling the energy, and additionally, we will have our boards and commissions interviews, I believe it's next Monday evening, I think that's correct. So, we have, you were given in your red folders this evening, all of the applications and the names of the individuals, so I hope that you saw my email with regards to that as well today, so if you have any feedback, otherwise, we will go ahead and schedule those interviews and make those happen next Monday, so that we can move on with our next item of business. Thank you.
Community development, John?
Yeah, we're awaiting, and I know the staff is busy, the Beautiful Your Neighborhood grants, and the corridor landscape project, so as soon as we're getting a report from the staff, we'll set up a meeting and get that going. The, probably a big part of my annual retreat program is going to be about 13 to 15 little housekeeping items related to the Community Development Committee, and I hope to spend about five minutes on each one and just move on. Thank you.
That's good. Finance, Mike? Public Services Committee, Christina?
Nothing, I'll set up meetings after our retreat.
How about Dublin Friendship Association?
No, we have not met since the last time we.
Chris Morpsey?
I did have my interview for the Executive Committee last week, so I gave it my best, and we will wait and see shortly if we've been accepted for that position.
Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing.
How about the US 33 Innovation Corridor Group?
Nothing to report, thank you.
John, Dublin Arts Council?
Nothing, except for there's a really good art program on right now, so try to make it out there. Magic, it's magic, got to see it.
Great, thanks, John. Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing.
Washington Township, chief, proud and happy, everything go back there? All right. Council Roundtable, Jay?
Kathy and I attended the Ohio Municipal League Seminar for New Council Members on Saturday, and our own Steve Smith gave quite a bit of information, and it was fascinating and enjoyable, and we learned a lot, and scared us a little.
Yeah, so watch out. We have been educated, so.
Anything else, Jane, is that it? Kathy?
No, nothing.
John?
Just want to congratulate George Bell on the honor of being our grand leprechaun, and congratulate the City on the Silver Level Award for the Healthy Business Council, and that's really a great honor, it shows, you know, what we, how we care about our employees, and what's really going on internally in here, and we are setting the example for a whole lot of communities and businesses, so congratulations.
Thanks, John. Mike?
Just a couple items, I got a couple calls about code violations, apparently, right off Waterford, the twin singles, all kinds of things there that shouldn't be there, including shopping carts out in the front yard, and heaven knows what. I don't know if we can talk to code enforcement about taking a look.
I'm sorry, you said Monterey?
Yes, Monterey, the entry area there. Also heard a little bit about a traffic light issue at Bridge and High, which I think you've probably heard about as well, apparently, people are looking into that, I think it has to do with pedestrian crossings, and what else? I heard a rumor that the Cats and Moyer Deli might be coming to town, that's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
Nothing, thanks.
Chris?
I have several things, so, one angel, thank you for the Parkland Acquisition Fund information and the history, so I really appreciate you following up with that, and appreciate the deep look into that. My issue with it is really twofold, is that when we aren't contributing to our Parkland fund the way we had been contributing to our Parkland fund, there's two things that happen if we want to acquire any parklands. One of them is that the CIP budget has to be revisited, because those dollars have been programmed out for the next five years, and so I think that's a good talking point, I'd just like to get these out there, so when we have our CIP meetings, we're prepared to discuss those things. So, it makes those kinds of parklands more difficult to acquire if we have to redo a five-year budget versus pull money out of a fund that is already available to us. And then the second part of that, that I'd like to add to the discussion when we have it, is that the automatic designation to the capital improvements budget versus some other budget to be determined, and I realize that we can change on that, but then that's going to require a lot of rework by any individuals that are putting together the capital program. If we change the destination of those funds, it will already have been budgeted out, and then we would have to rework all of that. So, those are the two topics that are of concern to me when we have that discussion in the future. Also, I wanted to thank you for the Rockcrest Parkway memo, I appreciate the adjustment to the design and straightening out that a little bit, and it looks really nice, so I appreciate the attention to that. I, too, had some questions about the CML memo, so I'm looking forward to hearing what staff has to say about that. For the Irish Festival, not being fully prepared for the technology, because we may not have the coverage in that area, so will the token, will we accept those tokens that we said we weren't going to accept? How's that, are we going to go back to the token system, and will they be the same tokens, and people can reuse tokens that they have?
Yeah, we'll need to continue using those, yeah.
Okay. Then, I received this from the Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District, actually, they called me Mayor Chris Amros Groom, so I got a big promotion right there, I'm not sure how that happened. Anyhow, there are some tree order forms in here, and I'm wondering if, Matt, if we could possibly look around the city of areas that we wanted to do reforestation for some perhaps volunteer projects of Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, anything like that, because these trees are going to be available in short order, and they certainly are a good value, and if we had those kinds of, maybe we could ask Christine if she had any larger groups that were interested in doing something along those lines, and then we would have the trees available to start some reforestation within the city for all the trees that we've lost. Additionally, I wanted to, thank you for allowing us to host at the Washington Township at your facility there, the Leadership Dublin group on the 13th, that was a, Jane, Kathy and I went, and it was a really engaged group, and they asked wonderful questions, I think we all left there feeling great about the future leaders of our community. I went to the East Dublin Civic Association meeting on the 20th, where the schools did their presentation, it's really a fascinating presentation where they're talking about the expansion and things, so appreciate the Civic Association hosting that. Also wanted to mention, Saturday night was the Snowflake Gala for the Dublin Women's Philanthropic Club, and they honored Julie Holman for her service in the city with Kid Smiles, and it was really neat to see her recognized for that, and see all the good things that she's done. Last two things, I, too, received a call about Bridge and High pedestrian activity, so, every time I, oh, wait, Chief is out there. I know that you received the call as well, so we need to find some longer-term solutions there that are going to keep people that are wanting to cross there safe, I don't know if it's policing it, monitoring it.
Just on that note, since that's come up a couple times, I was made aware today that there was going to be a discussion involving the Dublin, downtown Dublin Alliance, so I've asked Scott, now, I don't know if it's the same thing that you're hearing, but I got this email from Scott Dring talking about it, I've asked Scott if he would include our staff in that discussion, because there's, you know, there's a combination of traffic engineers and police, it's certainly a police issue, but it's as much a traffic engineering issue, parking issue, and so forth, so I've asked him if it would be okay, we don't want to, if it would be okay if we listened in, participated, and/or gave some background presentation and so forth, so that we all kind of got on the same understanding, so that, understanding meaning just what's been the history, and then we can collaborate on what those issues are and understand upfront, rather than wait to hear it from them on the back end, so he emailed me back right away and said, "Yeah, I'd love to have you there," so we're working on getting staff, I think there's a March 21 meeting on that.
My last issue is, it's a point of pride issue, for the Dublin Kaufman House, we have a sign out front that says Kaufman Homestead, it's held up by its two sections of chain link on either side that have rusted, and the rust has now dripped down, so that now the sign looks historic as well. So, I'm wondering if there's something.
That was planned that way, I thought, because I noticed.
So, I just would like to see if there's something else we can do, they have taken so much pride in that facility, and it's come such a long way, and there have been so many folks that made such an effort there, the sign really doesn't do it justice, and the rust bleeding down on it, I would really like to see that remedied. And additionally, you know, possibly, maybe our community services, we could look at maybe a historically appropriate landscape for the building, to really bring plants back to life that would establish it as though it might have been in its prime, so if we could put that on our agenda, I'd really like to.
It sounds like a bed tax grant to me, but.
I'm sure there's a group that would love to participate, some garden club or something that would love to participate in that, so it just, it's getting more and more beautiful all the time, and they have worked so hard, there's just a couple little things to really lean over the tape and finish it, that would make a significant difference. Believe it or not, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, two quick items, I went to the Asian Indian American Business Group Dinner last week, Chief was there, Nancy was there, Dana was there, Kyle was there, they did a presentation, it reminded me of two things. We went all the way over to Lewis Center, but it was a dinner that was honoring the city of Dublin, and they were recognizing their appreciation of the city and our appreciation of that community, or that section of our community. It reminded me of two things, one, how incredibly talented and important those members of our community are, and how proud we are to have them, and having conversations with them, they're incredibly bright, talented people, many of them have their businesses here, and many of them live here. It also reminded me of how hard our staff works. This was, what was that, a Tuesday night, Dana? Tuesday night, they'd been at work all day, this is their full-time job, and now here they are, spending four hours all the way across town, continuing to carry the water for the city of Dublin.
Food was great, though.
Food was fantastic, it was well worth the time and effort.
Works every time.
Yes, yes, indeed, and the effort that was put into it, I know that they reciprocate that, but Dana and Kyle did a fantastic presentation, and the Chief was there, and Nancy, and it was really a great thing, it was a proud moment for the city of Dublin, it was, I was proud to be there representing us. And then also, I would like to echo John's, congratulations to George Bell, to, just to let you know, we did roll out the new selection sort of procedure, and it worked very well. We had a couple people on the phone who otherwise wouldn't have been able to attend, Danny Self had kept hanging up on himself, so I'm not sure, it was kind of exactly what we expected, but I'm not sure what was going on there, the technology of the telephone, I guess Danny hasn't caught up with you, but in any event, he was able to participate, and it was really nice to have Ace was on the phone with us as well. Ace and George go back many, many years, and Ace was able to call George, and I would report, although the tally will remain secret, it was the largest gap between the top vote getter and the next vote getter that we have had for quite a while, so I know that George is very well-deserving, we look forward to seeing him at the St. Patrick's Day Parade. So, with that, we are adjourned.